Everyone knows a bully, hopefully not two. If you see a bully, what do you think you do? You see him at the playground, what do you think you say? We all agree about one thing when the bully goes away. Nobody, 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 nobody likes a bully anyway. Everyone knows a bully, hopefully not two. If you see a bully, what do you think you do? You see him at the playground, what do you think you say? We all agree about one thing when the bully goes away. Nobody, 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 nobody likes a bully anyway.
Winanus was that? Adam, sorry, can you say it? Adam Stamper. All those in favour were... Winanus.
Yes.
Yes, Winanus, thank you. Okay, are there any disposable pecuniary interests that we may have on tonight's agenda? Please raise them now. If there are any other interests which you have, you should also raise them at this time. I presume, because nobody's saying anything. There is nothing in the book? No, no, no. Okay, you are also reminded to inform the clerk if there are any changes which affect the rest of members' interests. Okay, first item three is to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 10th of June. I propose to accept those minutes first.
You can't. You're... Someone was, I forgot that.
Okay, then it's proposed, second. David, all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, and against, two abstentions. Six and two abstentions, okay. Now, the minutes for tonight's meeting, the clerk... Oh, sorry, I've got a sound just got on there. Okay, minutes for the extra meeting we had on the 29th of June. You recall that that meeting was adjourned and then incorrectly reconvened? Well, it wasn't reconvened because of incorrect procedure. The clerk has asked for advice on how that should be worded, and that has yet to arrive. So what's proposed here is that those minutes will be approved at the next meeting of the council, together with the minutes of this meeting. Okay, don't need to... Okay, all right. Are there... Oh, I've got three councillors' questions, sorry. Three councillors' questions from councillor Brooks. First one was, "One of my last questions at full council was not fully answered. Can the council now answer who authorised the second part of the Wilking-Chapman solicitors' expenditure, which was not correctly authorised in accordance with the council's financial regulations?" And my answer is, "Wilkins-Chapman were contacted in late 2014 to advise on the production of a disorderly conduct policy. To account a meeting disruption the council was experiencing at the time. Wilking-Chapman quoted a fixed fee of £500 provided draft policy, which was authorised by the clerk. The chairman was dissatisfied with the advice provided and wanted the policy amended to be more generic. This was amended by Wilking-Chapman, agreed by the chairman, and the policy approved by council on the 15th of April 2015. An invoice for £929.50 was then received from Wilking-Chapman on the 16th of April. This was queried as the expected bill was for a £500 fixed fee. The query resulted in the invoice being reduced to £829. There is no continuing liability for further expenditure resulting from this work." And the second question, "Looking at the timeline of events surrounding the Wilking-Chapman expenditure, why did the individuals who were responsible for this unlawful expenditure not seek approval from full council, which would have made the expenditure legal?" And my answer is, "At the time, authorisation was not sought as the council was not aware of any additional expenditure before the 16th of April. The expenditure was reported to council on the 13th of May in the schedule of payments, when Wilking-Chapman are being asked to confirm the reason for the additional expenditure." And question three, "The chairman of this council has for some period of time conducted himself in an unlawful manner, ignoring the council's governance related to financing contracts. He and members unlawfully excluded me from taking part in the meeting on Monday the 29th of June 2015. He then conducted council business which has been deemed void. How much longer is the council going to accept this level of conduct from our chair?" And my answer is, "I am unable to answer this question as you are asking me for the views and opinions of other councillors. The chairman was voted in for a period of one year, with effect from the 13th of May 2015." Those are my questions.
I know it's not normally appropriate to comment, but can I make it minute that when I first asked the question about Wilking-Chapman, in this chamber, I was told that that expense as a member of the public was related to employment issues, nothing to do with disorderly conduct? That is why questions were asked in your absence about it, and it refers to a time period. So why am I being told, and members being told, something totally different this evening? It just doesn't make sense to me. It's either employment issues, or it's to do with the unlawful misconduct policy that the council's adopted. You know, you've got to get it right.
Well, obviously, it's not usual to have this discussion...
No, but I think that's an important issue to...
I'll meet outside the meeting and discuss and tell you all about it.
I would like it to be an answer in public, because we've been given wrong information, and I think you should be able to tell why we were given that information incorrectly. That's all I'll say, because I don't want your voting to kick me out.
I presume you're saying that I told you that?
Sorry, I can't remember off the top of my head this evening who told me, but the formal... Actually, you did, I can go and get the video. You said it was employment matters. So there's dishonesty there, chairman.
I don't want to get into detail of discussion in the meeting, which...
No, but I would like to point out to members that there's dishonesty in answers at this council, and that's all I will say.
I cannot recall saying that to you. I'm following saying, I cannot recall that saying that to you.
You did, unfortunately. I'll get the video for you.
Okay, I will discuss it with you afterwards. Okay, but not at this present time.
Well, the whole theme's been on the basis that it was employment advice.
Sorry, I've got to move on.
Yeah, I appreciate you giving me the time to point it out.
Chairman and members' reports. I have a report as chairman, in fact as mayor. On the 31st of May, I attended the Rutland Show. 20th of June, I attended an event at Viva Castle which was organised by the Duchess of Rutland in aid of the Army Benevolent Fund. On the 22nd of June, I attended the Flying Flag for the Armed Forces Day, which was... The flag was raised at Oakham Library. On the 25th of June, I attended the annual reception at Area Wittering. And then on the 30th of June, I attended a presentation evening at Rutland County College, and presented the council's award for outstanding achievement to one of the people there, George O'Clark. Fourth of July, I attended the second medical engagement event at St George's Barracks. And then yesterday, in fact the 7th of July, I met the In Bloom judges who were inspecting the town, and welcome to town. Yesterday evening, I attended the High Straits event on the Rutland Bell in aid of Warning Zone. At the present time, we've had three band concerts in Cuts Close, and during those concerts, I walked around and introduced myself to those attending. And I received certain comments, which I think I'd like to pass back to the council. Many comments like, "Nice to meet the mayor, I didn't know we had a mayor", or they meant, "Thought the band concerts were excellent", most, in fact, I don't think anybody thought that Cuts Close was not beautifully maintained. Many people who I spoke to were attending and were on holiday in Rutland. Some people travel regularly from Stamford Mount Leicester to the concerts, which is very nice to know, and obviously, if we can continue to attract them, then that would be very good. I had one gentleman last Sunday, he was on holiday, he was a member of the Newmarket Band, and was so impressed and commented that he wished Newmarket Town Council were as forward-looking as Oakham Town Council. Now, that's unusual to hear that. It's nice to hear. All comments were very positive, I must admit, and as part of my job as mayor, I always think it's a part of the job to promote the town and the council, which I hope I do on that instance. Thank you. Any... Oh, you've got some.
Oh, yeah, a couple of brief ones, that's all right. Ken, thank you. Some of the councillors will know that recently a member of the public visited the chamber in the evening. They approached myself and asked if they could come along and do a look at the chamber and see what the council get up to, so they could do a report, which doesn't sound overly exciting. But this was a five-year-old girl, who's at the primary school in Oakham. And what it is, is that I got a letter, it dropped through my letterbox, no surprise because it's actually my granddaughter. And basically, I'll have to read it, because I'm sure most of the councils won't be able to... Being essence, she's saying, "Thank you to Oakham Town Council for letting me look round your chambers and teaching me a little about what Oakham Town Council do for us. Big thank you for all at the school for the pencils and postcards that you sent." So it's actually addressed to the chairman, so there you go, if you can read that, I'm in a price.
That's good.
So that's, yeah, not bad actually, because Nicole, who's only five, and she's written that all herself. The lines, if they look a bit wonky, that's because I drew the wonky lines. And the other thing is, is that on the outside bodies, Michael, Joyce and myself on the castle restoration project, this folder has been alluded to before, which is kept in the office. And what it is, at the moment, the project is going into the phase now where they're going to be doing work on the trees, on the embankments. The embankments, which are partly owned by ourselves. Robert Clayton for the council has offered to come in and give a briefing to the town councillors on what the work is going to entail, if they want it. I've actually written back to Robert and said, "It's contained in the report, which is a 20-page document, and I'm sure that if anybody's got any real issues or concerns", because we have all pretty much signed up to this work, that they will raise it. Joyce is aware of it, she knows the work's got to be done, she's happy with it. So what I would suggest, if any of the councillors want to be, know what's going off in detail, or if they get asked by members of the public, the folder is in there and you can access it at any point. I'll even say to members of the public, "If you're interested to know what's going off, I'm sure that if you contact the clerk during normal office hours, he will allow people to come in here and look through this folder in the confines of the chamber", because it's not top secret, it's not MI5 stuff. So rather than get Robert in to do a briefing, I've said that people will have a look at it, and if they've got any concerns, they'll go back, but the work's going ahead basically. And that was it, chairman, thank you.
A point of, whatever, before we get to that item, I believe that we are supposed to vote on moving an item on the agenda.
When we get to it, we will.
We... I was just that you made a proposal that it would be moved.
Yeah, so we will do when we get...
Normally, we've done it at the beginning.
Okay, your report, Dr Brooke?
Thank you, chairman. Just a few items on there, just to update you. Christmas lights, tender, so adverts will be going in the Brooklyn Times and Mercury tomorrow and Friday, as per the decision made at last meeting, Planning and Parks Committee. You've got the cost of those there, £341.60 for the two adverts, these are quarter-page adverts going in. I cleared the advert with Adam, so that's what's happening. Notices are going to go up on the notice boards again, advertising the tender on the website, and the company suggested by Martin will also be in touch with those about that by the end of the week. Classic car sprint, just to update you a little bit on this. You might be aware of this proposed event that was due to take place at the end of August on Oakham High Street, being organised by Oakham Town Partnership. Now, we have been copying into various emails today, saying basically, "Our Rutland County Council are not going to authorise road closures for that event", so if anybody does want a copy of those emails, then just let me know if you haven't already seen them, we've got them in there. There's some there also from Inspector Cord, the ex-inspector of Oakham, regarding that item. Right, skate park, it's nearly there, and it's due to be inspected by a representative from Calou, Calou are the people commissioning to build it. That is at 8:30 tomorrow morning, it cuts close, so if anybody would like to come along. I believe there are some concerns about it, and I will certainly be there, and it will be nice if members are awake and around, if they want to come down and go over it with the representative from Calou. Now, what I would just say for new members who might not be aware of the process by which it was built. Now, the design for skate park, this was actually approved in January, on January the 14th. Now, this was following considerable work at the time by former town councillor Alan Walters, which also included a consultation with young people in the park. So that was the design, and there is... People are often asked, "Why isn't it bigger?", and the answer is quite simply that English Heritage, or Heritage England as they are now called, have been asked about it on a number of occasions, and they have always said they would not allow a larger facility on the site. Okay, so that is the footprint, and the town council's always had to work within the confines of that footprint. Next one, Finance Working Group minutes, so we've got copies of those, as with the Promotions Working Group, we're keeping a file of those. And in fact, I think what we agreed is that I should be emailing all of those out, all day, Michael's on it, and once we've done them, we'll email them out, but we'll keep a file of them in there as well, again, if members want to see what the Promotion, sorry, the Finance Working Group is discussing. Planning and Parks, that's the 22nd of July. Please, if you do have anything you want on that agenda, we would need that really by before next Tuesday, the 14th. So if you've got any burning issues that you'd like to see on that agenda, then please, we have them, and a report as well, as I've asked for, I think the clerk's brought last time. Finally, just to sort of let you know that monthly film showings are going to be brought back by Arts for Rutland, starting on Thursday, the 3rd of September 2015. While I haven't put those, the tickets will be £5, available from those outlets, and further details from Arts for Rutland will be published by then soon.
Thank you, the public. I understand that there's one person wants to make a deputation, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Just wish to update everybody on the bolts and road issue, with it being discussed tonight. Councillors Burdon, Cifton have met with Dave Brown, who's the director of places at RCC. He's brought up all the accidents in that area, and is now, he has recognised it as an accidental accident. And as such, they are now going to, in this financial year, they are going to do a design pricing and public consultation with everybody, with the hope of in the next financial year implementing it. But what he's proposing at the moment is putting his epiphrasms in somewhere there, which will include extending yellow lines to be on Bronston and Bass Road Junction Road and directly opposite that junction as well. They've not got approval for the induction of the speed limit, because the police won't support that, because they say it's unenforceable. We've met with the residents, and we've said that we will eventually chase that, this is a separate issue, but the important thing at the moment is the fact that Dave Brown has accepted its problem, and he's going to go through with something. But obviously, if we can have your support on this as well, it would be very important.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else who wants to make a deputation, without covering the same sort of ground, obviously? Okay, thank you very much for that, thank you. Okay, on to the next item, this is the one to moving item 13, or bringing it forward. Can I have a proposal to bring item 13 forward to the next item first? Asher Scott, seconded, councillor Morse, all in favour? No, thank you very much, okay. Before you should have the letter from Hopkins. Are there any comments? Anyone who wants to raise any points?
I don't want to be fast, I don't know who we're going to...
Sorry, I didn't see you.
No, I just waited. I support what the residents are asking for, apart from the curious point of removing a grass verge for parking. And I couldn't support that, because I believe once you open the road up with off-street parking, you then create more speed, nice flow. We see that, I was approached by a resident this morning about Burley Road, where there are parking restrictions all down, and they said, "What can the town council do about traffic calming for Burley Road?" So if you take the cars away, I see that as increasing the problem. And also, I'm a bit green and don't see that grass verges should be used for cars, so apart from that, I would support.
I was just sort of partying in my wally area, you know. I mean, I totally support anything which encourages safety, and having been up and down the road a few times, you can see how vehicles ride from the top of, from the road when they're coming to Oakham, from Bronston, pretty much speed down the hill, so in actual fact, it was any amount of time before there was going to be an incident, and of course it's aspirated by the fact that the car was actually a lot busier than what people probably thought it was going to be. So to me, it's a pretty good initiative, I think the members of the public that have got behind it or got involved with it have shown, done it in the right spirit, and I think the town council should support them 100% in whatever needs to be achieved to make it safe.
Can I have a proposal done for this? Yeah, the two things we've got is, they've implemented 20 mile-hour speed limits along this stretch of road, as is in place on Cog Overton Road, and also direct radar speed display signs. These signs have been shown to be very effective in reducing the speed. So all we want is to implement... Doesn't stop us. So the first one is to implement, we'll take it together, John. Implement a 20 mile hour speed limit along this stretch of road, as is in place on Cog Overton Road. And also direct radar speed display signs. There is this point which councillor Brooks has just raised there about removing the grass verge. Now, shall we take that separately, if there's some controversy about removing the grass verge? So first of all, is anyone prepared to propose that we recommend to Rutland County Council the implementation of 20 mile hour speed limit along this stretch of road, and also to erect radar speed display signs?
I'll recommend it, but I agree with what the comment was made, that it's unenforceable. I have it in the area I live, and nobody drives it 20 miles an hour.
Does that stop us recommending it?
No, I'm just saying that I recommend it.
You recommend it, any second. All those in favour? Thank you very much. Now, another point there, about the removal of the grass verge on West Road to enable a safe parking residence, without it interfering the safety of this stretch of road. Removal of the grass verge on West Road, can I have a proposal for that?
Can I just speak on that? Please advise, may I propose that we actually do a feasibility study, or see if we can have a feasibility study of the cost incurred to mow the grass? A cost incurred to actually put off-road parking, which I personally feel would be beneficial to the area, being the driver? And see if we can actually come up with a good case to put forward to the county council? That would be my proposal.
Have a second for that proposal. All those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, all those against? Two against, okay, so that's carried. But on that basis then, we're not putting a proposal forward to the Rutland County Council to undertake that work. What we're doing is a feasibility study prior to doing it.
Yes, so that if we've got evidence to support it, then we can take that forward.
We could recommend that for the future day, if we've got the time to do it.
Yes.
Couple of news, going to do the feasibility study. Second thing is, usually by taking vehicles off the road to do off-road parking, the police will state that to take cars off the road, it actually speeds the road up. That's one of the reasons they liked having all the people parking down Stamford Road, it actually slowed vehicles down coming into the town, and it does work. In actual fact, if anything, turned Bronston Road into a car park, that would solve all the issues. So I'm a bit concerned as to how the actual feasibility study is going to be done, actually.
Take your time, we have votes on it. Yeah, no, no, yes, okay. I'll take it later, you don't want... Yes, go on.
You know the option of the parking restrictions? The yellow lines are not optional.
I looked at, sorry, I wasn't being rude, I just forgot, because we were planning these and we were sitting. One of the issues with, which came up, which Mr Howard won't mind me mentioning, is the highway code. It seems that things are not being enforced, like people shouldn't be parking near the junction, and if you are going to go for these things, maybe we could recommend that the council actually does a bit more enforcement. It surprised me with the comment as well about the speed, that no one can enforce it. It doesn't really send out a good thing from police and council, that you can't enforce the speed limit, and they don't appear to be enforcing parking at junctions.
Okay.
So I hope that...
Do you have a proposal to make on that?
Well, if it's a comment, we're adding to whatever we're sending that we note that the council doesn't enforce, or whoever's supposed to enforce the restriction, am I right, the restriction's 100 yards, isn't it?
It's 32 feet from any junction. So it's Highway Code Section 283, I believe.
That's brilliant.
So it's 32 feet or...
But maybe we should check that, to double-check that thing, but it would look good if we put...
Might suggest that goes in the feasibility study. For the background.
There's nothing in your letter about the double lines?
No.
That's why we didn't consider it.
It has been mentioned, the thing is, what we were told from RCC that we had to put recommendations in our cell, which you can imagine just a few members of the public are going, "Oh, and yellow lines was one of them", but now it's come back that the councillor Burdon, Cifton have met with Dave Brown, he's actually going, "Well, this is what I want to do", which is something they would just have put forward anyway, which is putting the crossing there, which he assures us is going to include yellow lines covering the junction area. But no, I'm just looking, I can't see the other lines.
And that's why we don't...
Can I make a suggestion, as we're using the rule that allows more participation, if we can, through you, ask the chairman if there's any points, as this is the only opportunity the residents have got, that if there's anything they've missed that we could include?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to bring up.
Yes.
But it's the double yellow lines, which, are you saying then that can't, can't already agree that we're doing it?
Well, maybe some of it will be part of the calming measures that come with the crossing, but councillor Burdon suggests that we may be able to, with enough pressure, get the yellow lines before that, but it's a separate thing.
Excuse me, sorry.
Just quickly, as well as double yellow lines, to stop people parking there, do what they've done in Church Street, double yellow lines, and then on the pavement, they put red, not red, yellow lines on. That means that nobody can park there.
No blooming, anything?
No. So it's as opposed to the double yellow lines, it's the yellow line on the pavement as well.
I'm just waiting, sorry. Interview of what the committee said about the... Many others, please? About the county council proposing a crossing and yellow lines. Could we not get more details about what they're proposing? Because we're always going to end up with about three different ideas going around here. One to take the verge away, one not to take the verge away, you know, one for speed cameras and all the rest of it. So if you need to plan there, you can feedback.
Yes, if we're putting a crossing there, it will do the same thing because you can't park next to the crossing on both sides. So it will eliminate the yellow lines on you.
The class has reminded me that on anything like this, then Rutland County Council will consult with us prior to... So there'll be a second attempt at that, and then if necessary, at that time, we can make those proposals.
Yeah, we can just clarify that. All the member, not older in the physical sense, might recall that we were asked by RCC about a zebra crossing on Huntsman's Drive for access to Campus College. So if, as a member of the public states, that that is something the Rutland County Council are thinking about, then I would expect them to come to us and say, "What do you think? Do you think this is a good idea?" That's what has happened in the past, so I see no reason why that's going to happen again in the future.
Rather than rely on the fact that it's happened in the past and let it happen in the future, I would propose at this point that we also, with our other bit that we've said already, I propose that we ask Rutland County Council to specifically consult with us in regard to what their plans are with yellow lines or crossings. So we don't wait for them to come to us, we specifically ask that we get involved. That would be my proposal. It resolves all those issues. Also enables that two-way conversation with Paul as a duty.
Always in favour of that proposal? You know. Okay, is that okay? That satisfy it? Sorry about that, we went over the double yellow line aspect, which is not in your letter. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you wish to stay, please do. But obviously, if you finish now, then... I just... Thanks very much. Okay, and now we come on to the item on co-option. As members are aware, we did interview four people for, we co-opted onto the town council, where we have four vacant positions, sorry, three vacant positions. We now have to vote on our view of which candidates should fill those posts. We have, say, three posts and four candidates. In this instance, then, we have to vote, and obviously, the candidate who is successful will need to have an absolute majority. Now, an absolute majority is that that person will have more votes than the remaining candidates have between them. So is that clear? Yes?
Can I propose that we have a written sign vote?
Yes, you can do it. Do I have anybody else who wishes to?
It's not proposed, it's just needs three people to support a sign vote.
It will be a signed vote then. But what happens then, that we will vote for Oakham South West first, as did the single seat. And then obviously, the person who is successful in Oakham South West will then go out of the equation, will not be considered for Oakham North East, obviously. Therefore, Oakham North East, there's two seats of which there'll be three people competing. And we go through the same process again for each seat. Long-winded, I know, but it's the way we have to do it. Are there any questions at all about the way we're voting tonight? Okay, we're being a signed vote. Right, so first one is for Oakham South West. The clerk is bringing around the papers. You need to indicate against the name of the person you're voting for and to sign the paper. If you don't sign the paper, then it is void. Once you've voted, you're going to be counted. We will then go into the options of... What is it? Then you have to sign it, don't you? You must sign it, else the vote...
One candidate only, and please sign.
You're going to go to one candidate only.
People can ask to see them as well. People can ask to see them.
Oh, yes, although they're signed, they can be... Ready for you to pass your votes round? Okay, just to join the meeting for a few minutes for...
To suspend it.
Suspend it.
Just in case. Suspend it.
On the brain.
Not after 15 minutes.
Funny enough, this is one of the scenarios we're going to ask Nalk about, National Association of Local Councils, because the situation is there are eight members here. So the successful candidate would need five votes to constitute an absolute majority. Jasmine Hopkins has four, Rebecca Hearn has two, and Michael Haley has two. Okay, so the situation that we have here is nobody has an absolute majority. Sorry, and John Brackenridge has no votes. Now, what we have here is the situation where the person with no votes is eliminated, which is Mr Brackenridge, and I'm going to ask you to vote again. You are now voting for three candidates. Okay, I'm sorry this is long-winded, but this is how it happens. Which is with a new one?
Can I clarify? Richard said we're voting for three. You voted for one.
You have a choice of three candidates. Now, Mr Brackenridge has been eliminated, but you are only voting for one.
You're voting for one, and Mr Brackenridge is now dropped out, so you've got three people to choose from.
But you didn't get a vote anyway.
No, that's the problem.
He might get a vote in the next round.
Yeah, I mean, just because he's out of this one, he's still going to consider him for the other two. If it's the same thing again, well...
This is why co-option is not a good idea. But it's the first time the council's done it properly in life history.
What are we getting there?
We're getting it, it's good.
We're now about slips, so...
Oh dear, we've warmed up a photocopy.
Don't forget to sign your forms, please.
What if it's the same again?
Come to that a minute, come turn a minute.
Hoping someone's going to change their mind.
Excuse us. Need some more paper?
Yeah, it's the same, yeah. One can have four now.
Oh, one can have four.
I don't know, Richard has got it written down.
So our second round then, ladies and gentlemen, we have five votes for Jasmine Hopkins, three votes for Rebecca Hearn, so Jasmine Hopkins is co-opted to Oakham South West.
Now, you have the option now of signing your forms and joining the meeting, if you'd like to do that. And you also have the option of voting.
Oh, so that makes it a bit different, isn't it?
Okay, so if you'd like to then...
Suspend the meeting.
Suspend the meeting, while Jasmine, please Hopkins signs your forms. So it's very long-winded this time.
She put a stain on her, she chopped it to a bleed, it was pure smell.
We have concluded and ended my work. This is what we said we were going to do.
Actually, I'll turn this off now.
As we've already discussed, you pointed out West Road, you know, has some interest now, so... So we go on to the next vote.
It was just suspended.
No, suspend it.
Meeting resumed. We now go to the, vote now for one of the members on Oakham North East, and we have to vote individually for both of these, so we have to vote for the first one and the second one. Two members for North East. So we're going through the same process again, but don't forget that Ms Hopkins is no longer a candidate because she's already been... So you've now got three candidates for each post. Can I just, please, no talking? Shall I take his man? So this time you're voting one person again, but do not consider Ms Hopkins, because she's already a candidate. Don't forget to sign the vote. Anymore. Meeting suspended.
That one's easy.
Can I go now, then?
Thank you, Mr Stubb, for your assistance.
My pleasure.
It'll be interesting now if we can get the full picture of what the council want to do in Braunstone as well. Because it's sort of a bit difficult because it's usually written up paper, which is fine. I'd say that if they think there's something at issue, then we need to get the whole thing, but they're not going to do it.
Right, thank you, everybody. So from the last time, seven votes for Rebecca Hearn, one for John Brackenridge, and one for Michael Haley. So Rebecca, do you mean co-opted to Oakham North East?
Thank you.
Would you like to sign your forms now, John? Meeting suspended? David, would you like? The clerk can sign your forms.
Sorry?
Meeting's now resumed. Congratulations, you're taken. I hope you enjoy your time with Oakham Town Council.
Welcome.
Okay, now we have one more vote to make, and that's for the other seat in Oakham North East. Don't forget now that you will not be voting for councillor Hopkins or councillor Hearn. So you've got two people to vote for, of which you have one vote. Don't forget to sign the voting paper. Meeting suspended.
So now there's ten of you, somebody needs six.
Six, oh, that could.
There's ten now.
Oh, I have same.
No, that's right, no, 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 you've got same, didn't assign, then somebody only needs five.
May I be excluded?
Thank you very much, yeah.
Thank you.
Have you been believed?
Meeting suspended again.
On duty for the next forty-eight hours.
I hope you don't get called out. Well, I think it would be, um, the very profession, not John, what was his name?
Michael Hayley.
Michael Hayley, I put my money on Michael Hayley. Because he was the, the I support's young person in the community, but I, I would say that Michael Hayley's probably, might teach us something. If it comes out, I mean, you know, if it just says one, it's John. He's a big bloke, isn't he, now, so I've got a vote for him.
Eight votes for Michael Haley, one for John Brackenridge, and one abstention, so Michael Haley.
Is duly co-opted onto the counter, as he's not here tonight, obviously he'll be notified tomorrow, can't wait to notify him tomorrow. Okay, thank you very much for that, I know it's a rather complex system, but it's what we have to do. And now we move on to item nine, which is the fitness centre.
Thank you, Ken, right, the, um, the, hopefully, the, I've tried to keep the orange paper as simple as I can. When this was prepared previously, the quote for converting or doing work to, but the fitness centre came to, or the estimate, the first estimate was fifty-eight thousand pounds. And the suggestion was that, um, from one of the previous meetings, that maybe we should do it in part, if we do anything. So we had a revised quote, which is detailed on here, it's broken into three areas, I think, gives you a cost breakdown. And this would be to make the building, what they will describe as fit for purpose. Um, if I step away from the town council relocating there, the town council unfortunately do need to do something with this building. If it was to be used as even a community pub, even if they didn't occupy themselves. So to make it fit for that purpose, this is where this indicative quote has come through at twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five pounds. So it's still going to cost money to put, to put the things in, like gas central heating, which is one of the main costs, which is about twelve thousand pounds. Heating, which is like boilers and radiators, joinery and plastering, which is doors and stuff. So it's, I've tried to keep it simple, so it's, it's down to the members to decide on what they want to do. And that is that, one is that the council puts this out a formal tender, because obviously the value involved, and agrees the process by which this is going to happen. The second option there is that the council sets a date that the formal tenders are in by, the order of works and completion dates. Um, and then three, the council might want to set a provisional date that they choose to relocate, because as it says in the first paragraph, in January two thousand and fifteen, the council did agree in principle to relocate, subject to costings. When it comes to where the money will come from, um, I've got a meeting with, uh, the chairman and, uh, county council on other matters, and I was going to raise the question. Because on the previous report, it was suggested that if it's used as a community centre, we won't be able to get hold of some kind of grant from Rotten County Council, so that is an avenue. In essence, so the council needs to be mindful that it might have to fund this itself, and that could be either out of its reserves, or by building it into, uh, financial planning for, for the next year, or for another loan, which I don't have the key. Um, that's it really, so the paper's there, I'd rather hear what yourselves have to say, because we spoke enough.
Okay, does anybody have any comments, questions? I realise that two new councils will be, will be a little short on knowledge on this, but, um.
Yeah, I did, I did go up to the open surgery, it sounds like, a little round.
Shall I just add something after there, because in actual fact, um, we did, we did put in the paper that we'd have a, I'd have an open surgery stroke consultation. It's not a full-blank thing, I mean, uh, we was open on that Saturday morning between ten AM and two PM. Uh, these are accurate figures, I've not falsified these in any way, I only counted one head, one person, sort of thing, uh, even though the children were in and out several times. Uh, there were seven adults visited the site, that wasn't including councillors, uh, there were three councillors there throughout the course of the day, um, on and off. Uh, there were a total of fourteen children, that's different faces that came in, um, either to use the facilities or to take advantage of the fact that we had put on some, uh, squash and biscuits. And some of the suggestions, bribery, if you like, so one of the councillors said that I was bribing them, but if that, if that, if we weren't opening the building, they wouldn't be able to get in. Uh, some of the suggestions that came from the public, just to put people in the, in the, um, in the picture, is that members of the public said, it would be brilliant, because when, uh, we come up here to, with our grandchildren, and we're sat watching them play, when we need to use the toilet, we have to go home. So the fact that there could be a potential, uh, access to a, another public toilet in the area. Um, one of the ladies said that a mother and toddler's, uh, opportunity, the children, the young people, which are aged between about eight and sixteen, were advocating a youth club style approach. Uh, somebody said that it could be ideal for bingo for the elderly, because they're not aware of anywhere else in the town that does it. Um, and a, a young girl, who was around about fifteen-year-old age group, she did come in, said it would be a good place for, to practise music, and I don't know if you put her up to that, wasn't me, which said it would be good, because she could practise, practise music and play there. Um, yeah, and the, one of the comments, only negative comment I had from public was that, oh, the kitchen would need improving. Next.
You're itching to say something.
itch away.
Right, yes. I, um, in his medical, I should. Um, I was there on Saturday, and, um, I've had various thoughts about it. Um, I would like the council to go out to tender, and proper tender, and I'd like to see that tender before it goes out. So often we're told people are seeing it, but as councillors, we should all see it and approve it. Um, also, there's still a little confusion, because I was told that this council did decide to move there, but what was said again this evening suggested otherwise again. So can we clarify that point? Because I believe if we are going to move there, we need to know we're definitely going to move there, otherwise it's no point, no point in us doing it. And also, I think it's very helpful knowing what contractors can be like, not all of them, that we actually set a date this evening, if that was one hundred percent that we're going to move. And then people know as a contractor, this could take a month to do the work, but, so we set our date, telling them that we're going to move perhaps November, just picked that off the top of my head. So then you know you tender process, you've got a month for the work, and they have to be finished, so I won't go on.
Um, in, in the January meeting, it does actually say the council will relocate there, subject to financial reports and blah blah. So it actually does say we would relocate, subject to this sort of stuff.
But it doesn't say when.
Doesn't say when, just says it's, we will. Okay, so the council made that decision to move.
Could, could we get maybe, uh, a re- clarification on, on that, so that it is set in stone? Because I actually watched a video of the twenty-fourth of March this year, where the, the mayor actually sat there and told everyone the council hadn't made the decision to move. So I'd like it to be somehow said that that is definite, otherwise a lot of people are going to do work, and then somebody's going to turn around and say, well, we never actually agreed it.
Well, I'm just looking at the minute.
Yeah.
I mean, and as far as I'm aware, the minute the decision was made, he'll look up the minute and confirm it with you. Anybody else anything?
A, a, a decision to do something subject to something, doesn't sound to me like an incontrovertible decision, sorry. Does it? So I have to, we, I think I have just, a decision to do something subject to something, doesn't sound like an incontrovertible decision.
It could be challenged.
Well, I mean, the, the point is, what if the, um, the costs come in, which were not acceptable for the coun, to the council?
Well, I mean, that, that would be, sorry, no, I only mean that, that, there are many instances where that sort of, um, that, that sort of unfinished thing, it just worked around. Because people, it's in people's interest to do it, so it's, it's entirely desirable to have a decision that isn't quite a decision. The, the, yeah, and Michael was right, um, and I think what it is, is that the, the study was based on, well, the, the two reports, the report that Martin alludes to, where there was a question mark over whether we were going to move or not, by the, by the previous chairman, um. The, the first meeting, as I said, produced a value of fifty-eight thousand pounds, which the council felt at that time was a lot of money to pay out for moving. The, the, to look at it as a phased move, rob that this value, an indicative cost of twenty-eight thousand pounds, it's now whether the council feels that that is an appropriate amount of money, whether it can afford, well, it can afford it. And, and the decision can be based on the fact that they're looking at about twenty-eight thousand pounds.
Absolutely original.
Yeah, I've seen that, yeah, my fault, my fault.
Sorry, to, to what, to what standard then i- is this? Because i- is it really twenty-seven thousand pounds? There's no electrical points here, there's, you mentioned the kitchen.
The, uh, the, the work that had been done on the fitness centre, prior to the fitness centre people moving in it, which was about three, four years ago, there was seventy thousand pounds spent on the building, where there's an upgrade of the electrical box and, and electrical points. And that was made fit for purpose to be a gymnasium, and the, the bulk of the cost of here is based on heating, what the building is lacking is heating. And to, to be used as either a creche, or a youth club, or a council chamber, to make it fit for purpose for that, by an office-style environment, it would need central heating, and that's why the building cost is linked to heating.
Does it not need any further electrical work?
No. No, the, uh, the, when the, the guy that did the, this quote, uh, which is Browns of, uh, Melton Mowbray, they certainly, everything there is, is fit to be, is literally just needs the heat put in, in, in simple terms.
Sorry, but again, it's furnished, it would have to be furnished, if it's going to be used as a council chamber and council.
I, I think there's more costs.
Yes.
I mean, I, I think all, all you've done is looked at the, the building re- re- relocation.
So it doesn't bring in moving costs.
It doesn't bring in moving costs, it doesn't bring other things in, so twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five pound is the estimate.
Is, is building works?
That's purely building works, there's costs on top of that, which will entail the move from here to there, any other fabrics, chairs.
Possible replacement furniture.
Furniture, anything else like that, and whether we decide to have anything else up there, it will be over and above that figure, so this is purely for building there.
Can I make a suggestion, I'm not going to make a proposal, but obviously we need to go out to tender for something that's likely to happen. But as part of that group, when I think it's councillor Lucas Flanksby and, and Low, um, I joined the group late. I like to think that we could do this in a professional way, so perhaps as a group, we, we should be presenting the council members with a particular business plan. We start looking into this, you know, what everything's going to cost, the council already has authority for new furniture in here, which is all because someone measured it wrong and told. So we know there's the money available for these things, but we've got nothing set in stone, what you would expect from a professional organisation, which we can say this is what's going to happen. Of course, there'll be things you'll come across later that need to be added, but that's the way I'm looking at it, that we haven't got a plan.
Okay, thank you, that. Can I just read something out, this is minutes from the meeting of the fourteenth of January two thousand and fifteen. After much discussion proposed by councillor Alan Walters, seconded by councillor Alan Low, and agreed with five votes for and three against by councillors Julius Clupp and Noel, that approval moving forward with option B, whatever that was, and that the council relocate to Princess Avenue, subject to building regulations, planning, and potential sources of funding, is the way it's phrased. That's a working group established to progress this decision. So that, that was the decision, so according to that, we have agreed that we will relocate to Princess Avenue, subject to, again, that problem, the building regulations, if we can't get, I can't imagine not going to get building regulations.
Well, this, this is where, I'm sorry, the, the council was running comments before the, uh.
Sorry, yeah.
Um, just a question, if we, if, if you move the offices of the council there, doesn't that void then the use of the building for the things like the music, the creche, the youth, does it not need, does it need enough space to keep them?
I don't know if you've seen the plan there, from Martin to pass you on there, but half of the building could be used for the council, half the building could be used for, for, um, public or community events, and, and on other costs, and, um. And in actual, going back to the January meeting, um, the January meeting obviously made the decision to move, and that's what we've done, the report that came back in the middle of the, uh, between then and now, um, established that building regulations won't be an issue, um, established that, or that, that, um, members on the group there, which I think was councillor Walters, uh, had looked into that, and there was proposed that there would be no issues. The only thing that came out of that meeting was that they thought that fifty-eight thousand pounds was too much money, and could it be reviewed, what if it be done, if it was done piecemeal, done in little bits? And that's why we've come back, that's why I've kept it simple, because the previous meeting had sort of said, planning shouldn't be a problem, indicative indication was that if it was used as a community centre, we could get funding from county council. I have spoken with Richard on the phone in the last fortnight, and we've spoken about things of carpets, um, the internet, moving the office, functionality up there, i.e. we have to have computer accesses. And if we, we put a ballpark further on, that if you were to total it, we'd probably look at another ten thousand pounds on top of that, and that would be probably the top rack of it.
So let, let me assume that this, this tender will be done professionally, it's not going to be something just handwritten by ourselves. I remain a bit concerned, because I'm, um, not sure about whether we've taken everything into account here. What we must remember is that we have to give notice to the Victoria Hall by the thirtieth of September this year, that is the final date, six months before we will actually move. If we miss that date, then it's another year before you can give notice. So that is a timescale you're looking at, so it's fairly tight, I guess, and before we can give that notice, I'm sure that everybody wants to be sure that we will move, that we, pardon me, that we've got, um, work in progress, we've got a good, um, tender for the work we want to do, and also additional, pardon, um, additional things, considerations like. Um, in the meantime, we're also taking over, or possibly taking over Oakham Cemetery, which is going to be an additional workload, and we're also considering work, starting work on the neighbourhood plan, or bringing in additional workload at that crucial time. So I, I think what I would like to see is something that ties in with what you've just said, sort of like a business plan for the move, because, um, what I wouldn't want to see is it done in little bits and bobs, because if we do that, then it's going, something's going to be missed.
Well, we can play, play one thing, though, it doesn't need building regulations, there's no building regulations, and the other thing, the only other thing would be a change of views, we'd have to get that sorted out.
Yes, I mean, but we need to plan all these.
That's right.
Because ob- obviously anything like this is going to take time, how long's it going to take for the tender to be written, who's going to write the tender, how long's it going to be put out before we can get responses? Um, how long then after we've chosen the right, um, contractor, will the work be completed? All those sort of things need to take into account, and that the time plan is wrong, that, that, that would be what I would be looking for.
Well, I mean.
You, you've given us a date of when we have to give notice, now, obviously, this has dragged on since last year. Now, I think, I don't know what the general opinion is of the new council now, but my opinion is we should do this, because it involves the community and gives us a better space. But what I would hope from this evening is that Richard would probably enlighten us of when we give notice, how long that's for, that would then give us the date of when we're moving. And if we can get an agreement this evening that we are doing it, now that means that if it looks like the working group, which includes me, and I hope it wouldn't do, is failing the council and it's not going to happen, then we don't give notice in September. But I keep saying, we need a date so that when you go to people for contracting or whatever, and it also pushes us as a group to actually get on with it and say, what, what's going to be the problem here, what's going to be the problem there, how do we solve it? And we get the plan and we can bring you reports each meeting, how we're progressing. I would like to see it done like that, if that's in agreement.
But I think, one, one, one of your questions there was, if we didn't notice on the thirtieth of September when we move, but we give six months' notice.
Right.
So it'd be the.
But we could move that before, then if it happened.
Before giving notice, you've got to be certain that you're going to go.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm saying now, we're, we're now in July. So if we made the decision tonight that we were going to move in January or the start of the new council, you know, for the year, April two thousand and sixteen, then at least we have a goal. And if it looks like we're failing and not doing it, because I, I don't want to keep going through this process where we just bring you a different quote for here and there. We've got to get a grasp of it and actually do it. But we don't want to commit, I don't personally want to commit a lot of time because it's a big project if we don't have a date.
Can I ask what the accommodation is for the council on here compared to what we're sitting in and the office next to it? Size?
Gosh, if you ask. I haven't, I haven't got a, um, I haven't got a size there and this is what the square meter is there. But I could pretty much say that, um, the council chamber is about twice the size.
No, no, well, that's all.
So, and the, and the office is probably about only as third as big again.
So there's more space.
There's certainly more space than, in, in what that currently.
For the town council.
For the town council.
Um, obviously, we've got to go, we've got to think of going forward, um, and, and look to the potential move. But personally, I don't think we can say definitely we're going to because we need to have, uh, the accounts for everything, not, not just this building work. But we need, we need, we need everything as it's already been suggested. And until we get that, I don't think we are in a position to make a decision that, yes, we're going, we're going to move, because there may be some obstacles coming up. And personally, I think that is the safest way to go.
Well, saying that, that we do not have to give notice until the end of September, so you've got time there to, to make a decision.
Yes.
Obviously, we would want to give the Victoria Hall as much notice as possible, but if we can do that, we would. Not without being definite on what we want to do.
Yes, there, there's one point that, uh, say we don't move into it and we, uh, we go to rent it, the work that's down here would have to be done anyway. Because it's got to have central heating in it, we wouldn't be able to rent it without central heating. Uh, and the bit of joinery that is there and the plumbing and heating as well. Because it's been, uh, the plumbing's for a fitness centre and it's not for a, for any other organisation. So that's all got to be written out anyway. So, I mean, really, we should be looking to see if we can get the building in shape anyway to do either moving for the ca- you know, the council moving or rent it out or turn it into a community hall.
But there's no reason why we can't go for formal tender now, decide.
No, there's no reason now.
Because there'll be a timescale which might last three months before we get those tenders in. In that mea- in the meantime, we can make all those sort of decisions about costs and everything else that needs to be done for us to move eventually to Princess Avenue.
Um, I, I'm concerned that, um, the council was concerned about spending money, that's why we came back to the table. Um, some years ago, I'm not quite sure how many years ago, the council went out for formal tender to convert this building and probably spent, I don't know how much, but thousands of pounds just on the tender document. If you go out to the wrong people to get a tender document, the tender document alone could probably cost you five to ten thousand pounds. If the council wants to waste money, crack on, that's all I'll say on that. I think tonight you should be agreeing to go out to tender based on converting it into a building fit for use as anything but a fitness centre. Um, we can go out from here and get more detailed costs on carpeting, on computer data, on data points and on, well, the furniture thing is already decided because we, the furniture thing came to the council already. So to me, the, the tendering, yes, I, I agree with Martin that we want to make sure it's professionally done. But for somebody that's always harking about wasting public money, if you want to waste five or ten thousand pounds on somebody telling us what we already know, then, I'm sorry, I, I'm sort of thinking that all that I'm hearing is people that are blocking the move to the building. And that's my opinion.
Yeah, you understand.
Yes, um, while we're waiting for tenders for this or, or you could go the other way where we just, uh, get different local companies to, uh, cope for it. While we're waiting for that, we could be still looking at getting the grant for doing the, uh, the one, the side that we proposed in front of. Or we could look at getting grants for all of it, just in case we don't move.
Yeah, if you look at the timeline, I suggest that the tender is going to be the longest process. So while that's going on, there's other work you can be doing.
We can be doing all the rest in between.
Yeah.
Can I just clarify a point? I wasn't suggesting we brought in people to do the job for us. When I said professional, I was actually saying that we do it in a professional way. Sorry if I didn't clarify that. Um, but also I'll re-emphasise that we need a date whether we're going to produce it ourselves. We can't just go to a contractor and say, can you do this for us? And the first thing they will say is, well, when do you need it done by? That's the issue I have, you know, you.
Last one, David.
Yes, uh, you can get standard, uh, tender documents and we've got the information we need to put in it on this paper that Adam's just.
Okay. I think we need to come to decision now, I think we've talked around this quite a while. So, um, the first decision required there is that the council puts the, is that a formal tender agrees the process by which it hap- or this is to happen. Do I have any proposal for that? Okay, sorry, but just now, can, Clark's out at the moment. And seconded by. Okay, we're just on, I can, I can. The council puts out and agrees the process of, it's been, um, proposed by David and seconded by Paul. All those in favour of that proposal? Okay. You numbers, thank you very much. And the second one is that the council sets a date that formal tenders are to be in by, award works and completion dates. Now, I don't know whether we're in a position at the moment to do that because we've got to know when the meeting, or when the, uh, tender's going to be ready by before we can do that.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, yeah, in actual, on there, we haven't actually, because item one actually says, agree the process by which this is to happen. Because that's the fact we need to, whether we're going to advertise it. So, um, I'd say there, the, uh, as we said, we need to have a decision by September thirty first?
September thirty.
Sept- September, September the thirtieth?
That's thirty first.
I mean, it's, um, oh no, it's not, well then, can we make one? Can we, can we make it a tender, to, to give us an extra day? Um, I would say that we, we should endeavour to get this done by the end of September. Okay? I, I, I mean, that's, that's what I think.
On the tender process, in this set period that we have to have, do we have to have more than one month or two months or? Or do we have to have?
There's no limitation, there isn't.
There isn't, I mean, one of the, one of the issues is, uh, last time that it was done, specification, which is what a contractor is going to need.
We've got a smaller specification.
Well, if members are happy that a tender is going to be done by in-house, then fine. Um, so if last time it was done by a firm of local architects.
I think they can do it.
I, I think you may want somebody just to castorise it, I don't know if you're in that position, Adam.
Um, well, Daniel probably is more in a position to have that done than I. So, but the thing is, I mean, that previous tender that was done over a years ago, the council sat on that, they could have utilised that and they traded it off. So we spend now thousands of pounds or something we've never used, so, okay.
We're, we're asking for processes, a formal tender. So can I suggest on item one that we advertise in proper?
We voted on item one already.
But, but we didn't decide the process, so we've just agreed, we've just agreed that we have.
We decided to go out to tender.
Yeah, and then it says, agree the processes by which this is to happen, so that's what I'm doing there.
Take this as a second proposal, Martin, agree the process by which this is to happen.
That's what I wanted to comment on, is that okay?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Right. Um, it's only my suggestions, is we advertise in proper building trade magazines for building. As we break down for plumbing and heating, we approach as a council as many local gas installers, um, central heating installers, because this is the sort of thing that a local business could do, which then gives us a good variety of quotations. And I'm available to go there. So if people say, well, if there's a lot of people, there's not enough time, I'm available to go there when someone wants to do a quote. Um, and very similar with the joinery and plastering, basically, we go out to, we look for some in trade magazines locally or whatever who do proper joinery and plastering. And we just approach people because, um, it was one of the points raised to me today that somebody wasn't approached for something locally.
Yes, uh, when we do the tender, we need to put it out for all of it. We don't want to be splitting it.
Don't have that.
It'll just cost more money.
Right. Can I, can I have a?
Can I, um?
One, one more.
Can I disagree with that? Because, you know, generally, you wouldn't find that somebody who's going to install, if they're, for instance, a, I won't say a name, but a local heating specialist, they contracting people for, if they need plasters and things, but they generally wouldn't quote for that in this circumstance. I've spoken to people and they've said on this that they would only quote for the plumbing and the heating. And I wouldn't want them to miss out. It's not a difficult thing, it's three different things. If it's advertised, you either tender for the whole thing or you come to us. And if we don't have enough and somebody comes in to do everything and they're perfectly priced, then we go with that. But if we get three different people who come in, choose them.
Well, you know, with, so, I've worked on my house recently and I got one person who got all that work.
Very lucky.
Well, that, that, you choose the right one, you choose the right one.
Yeah, yeah, I would just say sometimes.
Um, I don't think you need to go out individually to a, a heating contractor or an electrician. There, there's something.
Yeah. I, 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 I want to stick with that date by the end of September. Um, it's, it's a tough call, but.
We can do it.
We, if we, if we don't hit it, then it'll just.
Two and a half months.
Yeah, it just defaults, so it's, we'll, we'll, proposals will be aimed for the end of September.
Okay, do you want to propose that?
Yes, that is my proposal.
Okay, that's again, seconded, for David. Okay, all those in favour that the council, um, attempts to get this tender in by the end of September?
Yes, exactly.
The favour? You numbers.
And, and, and on the final bit, the council sets a provisional date to relocate. I would at this time decide that we probably do not make a decision on that. Okay? Okay, any comments on that?
I, I, I'll second it. Because I'd like to move on, chat.
Okay. Right, so we're, um, can I, can I vote on, on that? Sorry?
That's what I was just going to say, sorry.
Can I vote on that we do not set the provisional, provisional date to relocate at the moment? Yeah, all those in favour?
That's why I haven't seconded by you, chat.
So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight, four.
And I'm unfortunately voting against.
Record it, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, record it, voting against.
I think we should have it done.
Okay. Right, we move on to item ten, which is about the accounts. Uh, I know this item here, the report is from, from the clerk who is reporting about progress obtaining an independent um, firm of accounting to conduct a review of our accounts. But I've asked councillor Elliot just to give us a quick, um, resume of what has happened to date before we make that decision.
Don't mind. Um, Mr. Chairman, a quick, uh, comprises a note that you have distributed. Looking to read the whole note. One and three quarter pages.
I mean, if you just, I, I'm such a to read it, so you might summarise it.
Um, on the twenty, by the twenty ninth of June, the council working group had identified three adjustments to be made to the accounts previously presented for signature to the tenth of June council meeting. At the special meeting called for the twenty ninth of June, the council working group believed these three adjustments by then applied to the accounts and the only return were sufficient to warrant recommendation of those accounts for signature. Those amended accounts for signature, i.e. on a second occasion. By early the following morning, uh, my claim itself was uneasy that the effect of two cashbook entries that had been brought to my attention in the minutes immediately before the twenty ninth of June meeting, the night before, meant that the adjustments made were possibly incomplete. And I asked to see that chairman, straight away on that Tuesday morning, took voice concerns and asked that the accounts and any returns should not be submitted after all to Grant Thornton. Up to that point, the council working group, new council working group, fairly hastily convened because of the calendar, new council, new groups being appointed, had worked very hard to get to the bottom of the matter and produce a set of accounts with which it was happy by the twenty ninth of June. It didn't have very long to do that and it, it had this timing very much in mind. So here, the day after twenty ninth of June, facing a situation where, whether we liked it or not, that twenty ninth of June date was not going to be met. Um, the point about that was that the council should get its accounts signed, approved by thirty to June. It needs to do that under the audit commission local authority rules. Uh, in the ensuing discussion that Tuesday morning between the chairman, the clerk and myself, um, it was proposed that the most sensible thing to do would be to get an independent firm of accountants to examine the council's records for the year and the accounts which have been brought up formally. The point being that at that, at that point, there was a feeling of, um, unease, embarrassment even, that, uh, despite everybody's best, best effort, but the, on two occasions now, the accounts were being put to the council for signature and there was unease about the content. So the credibility saved for the council and its members maybe the best thing to do is to seek outside advice and get, if possible, an outside certificate from an independent firm of accountants, launch them for all to deal with that. Chairman agreed to put this course of action to the council. Neither Grant Thornton nor the intern, nor the new intern auditor were in a position to carry out the work. Grant Thornton are conflicted under parish council rules. Um, between that Tuesday, thirty of June, and this Monday, sixth of July, the clerk and myself have agreed two further accounts adjustments to be added to the three original ones which have been applied. Um, there's a bit of detail of this and one of those additional two came directly out of the unease that I felt overnight after the twenty ninth meeting. And that unease stemmed from the two cashbook entries which had been brought to my notice only, only a few minutes really before that meeting. I felt at that time that the cashbook entries, while, um, peculiar, had been allowed for in the adjustments we've done. And it was during the, the night and early morning after that that I came to do that this maybe wasn't necessarily the case. And it, it may not be the case and the entries may be incomplete. And it, it may not be the case and the entries may be incomplete. It's elsewhere recorded for this meeting that, um, a firm of accountants has been approached. And I think we'll talk about this subject, Chairman, really. And there's a paper being circulated, I think, which is the response of that firm of accountants, Streets of Lincoln, who came in to see the mayor, the clerk and myself two days ago. I felt they were impressive. I felt they grasped quickly, uh, the situation as it really was. And they have, to my surprise, come up in the middle paragraph of their email, uh, which we were pains to try to negotiate with them the other day, that, um, they will carry out a review and subject to what they find, of course, they will give a certificate, a, a true and fair view certificate, that the councils, that, that, that the accounts and annual returns are in true and fair view of the council's financial performance for the year and have been properly prepared in accordance with generally accepted council practice. Now, that's quite a surprise for me. A firm of accountants being asked to act in this way is, thinks very hard before, as to exactly what certificate they will give, because they're putting themselves on the line. So the fact that they've come up with that seems to me, it's up to you to, to, to give whatever importance to that you want. But for me, it's a, um, it's a very, very good out term, providing when they do, if, if you decide to get them to do the work, that they can give that certificate. Um, I've summarized, this has gone on seemingly horrendously long, seemingly endlessly, and, um, nobody will, nobody would have been happy. Four of the five adjusting entries are timing differences of the kind that I spoke to, to, spoke about two weeks ago at one of these meetings. And, um, we use the job and then, you can't avoid doing it. Accruals and prepayments, uh, should have been put through the accounts when they originally prepared and they weren't. And they are the, uh, bookkeeping accounting device that changes a set of cash statements into an income and expenditure set of statements. So you bring in items that are not just receipt or payment of cash. You bring in items, uh, and charge them or credit them in an account where they clearly ought to appear, ought to be accounted for in that time period. So they are judgment items, bringing in timing differences. But they are the difference between receipts and payments and income and expenditure. It says elsewhere in this paper that when the partner from Streets came in, he was impressed with the level of receipts and payment details that were presented to this council each month by the clerk. And, um, impressed upon the amount and detail and that it was a great deal more than they see from a lot of other parish councils. Um, and so in the main, these items, eventually all, I believe, identified are in this area of accruals and prepayments. A drill that should have been gone through in converting the statements from one to the other that weren't, simply weren't gone through by the clerk or by the internal auditor at the time. Uh, the other one, the cashbook entries, I put in here, it's a matter of cashbook discipline. And it simply revolves around the fact that items were put in the cashbook, uh, two items of rent received were put in the cashbook when they hadn't been received. Now, that, that sounds a, uh, that sounds a dark thing if you believe that a cashbook has got to incontrovertibly openly record what you have received, everybody does it at home, uh, or what you've already paid out. In a way throughout this, I, I believe it to be the case, the clerk has allowed himself to be influenced unduly by account software that is set up in there and hasn't then been able, as a result of it, I don't know, had the time or whatever, um, to stand back and say, that's fine. But then you have to bring an element of judgment and an extra layer of procedures to bear in converting, well, any account software goes up before you produce the accounts which you put your name to. Um, th- these cashbook entries, uh, were anticipated. They've got rent in as if it had been received, which got itself, the other side of it was put into income receivable. And you simply cannot have cashbook items that anticipate receipt or payment. Um, Streets partners take all of this away, grasp it quickly and competently. Um, I've said that they're impressed with the level of the paperwork during the year. And I've put in this note that, um, nothing in any of this inquiry, while it's been arguably sloppy or verging on incompetent, uh, there's no, no evidence that I've come across or the other members of the working group, and they've worked on it with me, that there has been any intention to cheat or defraud. It is a question of, on a fairly simple level, you know, taking an awful long time, the job simply wasn't done properly for being harsh. Um, I think it will be in the future because the clerk has been reminded by these events that the, amongst other things, the professional, uh, parish council guidebook does actually take you through what you need to do with accruals and prepayments at the end of, at the end of the period. And of course, you only do this once a year. All the rest of the year, it's cash in, cash out. Once a year, if any chief is at a date, you have to do this, this, um, transferring over and conversion. So that's what this says, because it believes it to be the case. I don't believe that the outside accountants, if you appoint them, will come up with anything that is any more worrying than mistake or work not done properly. Um, I don't have anything more to say, sir.
I, I would just say that tonight we're looking purely at the item about whether we want to appoint external, um, firm of external accountants or not. Um, I would suggest to you that, um, what councillor just been talking about would be a subject for future, once we get a report from those accountants. Because, um, at the moment, we really need to make sure that our accounts are correct. Uh, there's no inactresses that we, we know of and that they are still submitted to an external auditors. And I'd like obviously to see that done as soon as possible. Dave.
Um, is this, uh, is this the figure they've given us, twelve hundred plus that?
Max not.
Max.
You will not exceed twelve hundred plus VAT.
To start with, we're only talking about ninety pound tranche, eight hundred and twenty nine pounds.
You're talking of, yes.
I mean.
Should I respond first?
Yes, please do. And, um, it is possible to arrive in a situation where if you miss out one of these, um, timing differences of, to exaggerate, a million pounds on one side and you can have nine hundred and ninety nine pounds on the other side, you only end up with a difference of one pound.
Yeah.
But it's simply not acceptable to produce financial statements for the authority. In this case, your commission, which has got errors on one side, which happened to reduce by counting each other out.
Yeah.
I, I well appreciate that we've ended up with a series of adjustments.
So they're only going to tell us what we're already know.
Yes, but in the process, sir, in the process, arguably, we've lost some credibility because of a whole lot of timing things. Um, the accounts were produced. The accounts were produced while the council, the new council was forming. No other, no other eyes looked at them. And then it was done in a hurry by twenty ninth of June. We've now missed that and we'll get a qualified audit report by missing the thirty of June agreement.
Okay. Um, I find it, however small or however minor it's described, appalling that as a councillor, I can't stand here this evening and look at schedule of payments, statements and accounts, simple as that. That is our legal job. I don't understand what's been put in front of us tonight. I'm shocked to read in that piece of paper there saying minutes immediately before the twenty ninth. Why was that not told to members? Members sat here and just nodded like they'd been cloned. And we ended up with me being kicked out of the meeting. You know, this is embarrassing. We are local government and, you know, I've had people telling me, I won't mention names. Well, why should we call the auditors then? You're all for saving public money. What a waste of money. I totally disagree. And, uh, you know, I have no faith in the system. So does that mean if we don't call in the auditors because it will cost us money, I have to sit here for the next three and a half years saying, I don't accept that? Because that's the situation. I'm reading incompetence, people not doing their job properly. I know you didn't want to go on to that, but this is a serious issue. You know, we, we, we have accounts that should have went in on, after the tenth of June. We, we're going to be published on the internet that we have defective accounts. We paid people to do this. We paid an auditor. We as councillors, Mr. Elliot has been doing a fantastic job. The law says, actually, he probably shouldn't be involving himself in financial matters. That's why we paid a proper officer and we paid an auditor. Something's gone wrong. So I say that we immediately call in the auditor so that we get confidence again in what's been happening. I, people know that I've formally objected on behalf of the residents as a resident. The City of London Police are aware of the situation. So tonight we just want, you know, to move forward and, and don't keep saying we can't talk about that. This is local government. You know, we, we've, we've got a council that can't account properly for taxpayers' money.
Okay, thank you. Um, just one thing, Chair. The town's a book there. How does he know? Will he put it there himself? Don't, don't let this widen the discussion here. Because I'm, just, just a minute. What, what we're trying to do tonight is decide whether we're going to.
Point.
Point. Firm of independent accountants. All this is going to be something of a discussion for the future. Yes.
Can I just quickly point out that it was the previous auditors who were published in two thousand and nine, the things. And that's how I found out that we were too close in two thousand and nine to our internal auditor. So it won't just be me publishing it. It stays there indefinitely that we, for the first time ever as a local authority, have not submitted accounts to an external auditor. That is a serious matter and I'm fed up with people telling me it is not serious. I find it embarrassing.
Okay. Um, I'm, I can take me to the, the business in hand, please.
I want you to.
Uh, yeah, I think we should have a vote.
Because of that.
Does anybody propose that we bring in external auditors?
Well, the phone.
I thought Martin was gonna do that.
If I'm not, unless you're. Maybe the chairman should do it.
I think he should.
Do, do I have a proposal to bring in the?
Well, I'll propose that, that we bring in. Although I don't know these auditors, I, I trust what we're being told by Mr. Elliot.
So you're proposing that we appoint the firm of Streets?
And I propose, I propose that they do a full and thorough audit.
If you do that, then the cost will rocket.
Well, I'm sorry, I, I don't trust the thing when I'm reading the thing.
The quickest way to deal with that point is this point about true and fair view. Um, a- any firm you approach in these circumstances is, is, as said before, going to think very hard as to exactly what certificate they give. And you, I can assure you, of course, a range of things is being done every day of the year. And a firm will end up putting something that really are no more than weasel words on it because they feel that's the furthest they can go because they're putting their name to it. A true and fair view certificate is going the whole way. And so you should be reassured by that.
Okay.
Can you see one more?
That's the problem where we're not qualified in this and we employ people and we trust that. But I, I hope that that will be the case, that we can then confidently tell the public, probably September, late September, that we now have accounts that are okay, hopefully.
They are responsible for that true and fair view certificate. And are, are open, are being challenged. And why would they give that if they weren't happy?
Okay, well, we propose on the table for now.
Can I just add one? The thing is, what, what I find difficult about it is that we keep getting emails saying that there's a ser- not so serious thing has been found. None of us have been told actually what has been found. What are these cashbook entries? What are these non-serious issues? And that's where I find that I'm having difficulty because there's been a lack of communication from the office of what's been going on.
You have proposed that you appoint Streets accountants, um, for, to undertake a review of the accounts, fees not exceeding one thousand two hundred pounds plus VAT.
Um, no, I won't proceed, I, I won't propose a limit because they could find a problem and then we would have to agree to.
They have quoted us not exceeding twelve hundred pounds.
Oh, that's their quote?
Yes, their quote.
Okay, fine.
I do have a second one. Anything else? All those in favour? Two, three, four, five, six, six four? Any against? Any abstaining? One abstention.
We're four.
We're four, sorry, I missed it. Can I just have another vote for four, please? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, four, and one abstention. Okay, thank you very much. The next item is, um, grant application. Please, little. Grant application on, um, amendment B. All that chance to read, well, I hope somebody in the new council haven't had much chance to read it. But, um, do I have any comments about the grant applications of amendment B, councillor Brooks?
Could I just, um, suggest that you propose an extension? Because I think we're coming up to the, um, limit because my battery's going, so that's the clue.
I'm sorry, I propose an extension for your battery.
No, no, I'm just saying we're getting close.
I know we are. I've, I've got my eye on the clock. Yes, thank you. Okay, any, uh, any comments about the grant application under amendment B?
I don't want to be first, but.
I should share. I mean, having looked at this, I mean, it, they've outlined what they want to achieve. Um, and I would, and, and subject for any of the comments, I would propose that we accept this grant application. Second.
Paul did that. Have you got a comment?
Yes, I have a comment. And it's basically, sorry, Mr. Stubbs, I'm getting quite cross.
Uh, just a minute, can we, can we?
No, but I, I've mentioned this, it's unpleasant.
I'll straighten the business.
Yes. If you look at part five, it says how much money you are applying for. Three hundred pounds. Have you applied for funding anywhere else? Please give details. No. Then I take it that we're being bullied, bribed, or whatever into accepting this application because included, it says that they want a hundred pounds for nibbles and drinks throughout the day, which sort of disappointed me the way it's worded and that. Because what the serious point about this is, it says, if your application is unsuccessful, are other funds available to ensure your project goes ahead? If yes, please give details. Yes. And I would suggest that money comes from Rutland County Council. But this is where I find it's appalling. We may just provide water and squash and drinks throughout the day. Sorry, the sums don't add up. And why should we give a grant application to a Rutland County council event on the threat that children are going to be given squash instead of cans of Diet Coke? You know, it, to me, it's, it sounds silly, but it's appalling. The sums don't add up. They really don't add up. Is it a joke?
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I, I acknowledge Mr. Brooks's point, councillor Brooks's point, it's, um, interestingly put. Unfortunately, I don't see the same thing that he sees, so my proposal still stands in front of that.
Well, I, I, I must admit, I would like councillor Brooks's. I, I see this as a, an offshoot of Rutland County Council. And Rutland County Council are not supplying any funding at all for this, which I find very strange. Um, and I also noted the, the point he made about the hundred pound in nibbles and, and the water and squash. And I, I find that it doesn't really tie for me and that, um, if we were going to do something, I would propose that we do some match funding rather not, rather than give them a lot, give them fifty percent of whatever they're looking for with, with the view that they'll have to find funding from somewhere else. That, that'd be my idea, no?
Well, they're, they're applying for three hundred pounds, aren't they?
Yes.
Well, the youth offending services is three hundred and fifty, the nibbles is a hundred and advertising is fifty. That's five hundred pounds of their project, isn't it? Well, they're only asking for three hundred. Well, they're only asking for 300 offers. It must be getting 200 from somewhere else.
It doesn't say so, does it?
It doesn't say so, but I mean, I'll just, so the maths doesn't add up. I'm just a bit confused with it.
Okay, very quick, please.
Definitely the last point. I'd like to know where they get their advertising figure from because 50 pounds, when you consider that we've been told we're spending, what was it, nearly 300 pounds on adverts? One advert, two adverts, so they must have an amazing deal with the Rutland Times.
Okay, I'm going to take this as conclusion. That's all right.
My proposal still sounds, thank you, chairman. What my proposal is, is that we support this application to the value of which I believe is 300 pounds.
Do I have a second for that proposal?
Second if I stand earlier on.
You second it all. All those in favour of that proposal? One, two, three, four, four, four. All those against? One, two, three, four? You're abstention, okay.
It leaves me with the casting vote, doesn't it? Therefore, I would vote against it.
Thank you. The next one. Please, don't talk. My next point is item 12, which is your files actually paying more than 5,000 pounds, which is definitely wrong.
It's just in five national regulations that any payment of those 5,000 pounds needs the authorization of the council. So there's an invoice for 5,000 pounds, over 5,000 pounds.
Am I rightly thinking that this expenditure is already being...
It's already in the council's budget for the year and the planting.
And the works.
Sure, it's like it's, that's already up, so...
So it's just a formality of going through the same council books?
I'm sorry, I have to make a comment. A few years ago, I basically got into problems with this council because of challenging this particular contract. Today, we're almost in the same situation, in fact, worse than what we were back there. No way should the council be paying, I think it's ridiculous. It works out about 80 pounds plus VAT for substandard shelling compost and about 10 pounds worth of plants, so I will be voting against this. Not the idea, but I certainly can't approve an invoice for hanging baskets which we own to be filled for 8,688 pounds 90.
Thank you. Any other point?
Yeah, the unit price of the hanging baskets is 29 pound 95 and the window vorters are 65 pounds. Now, I wanted the council to clarify that we're, would you own the basket? Do we own the baskets or not?
No, I don't believe we do, Dave. I can't answer that question, but I don't believe we do.
I think we do.
This is the third, this is the third year of a three-year deal with plant.
So are we airing the baskets then?
Well, it's all in that price. This is full planting, full maintenance.
So we're airing them?
Yeah, as far as I know. I can check.
Could you check, please? Okay, I'm now calling for the vote. Do I propose to accept this motion? In passing, to make a proposal to authorize payment invoice over 5,000 pounds to Planscape.
Shocking. I will propose that we pay this invoice because the work has been carried out and it was agreed on previous years that this is what the council would do with Planscape for the town of Oakham. It's not rocket science, guys.
Do I have a second? Councilors, all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All those against? Two, any abstention?
Could you minute that, please?
Yes, okay, I saw it. Okay, thanks very much. It's now two minutes to nine. I have a proposal to extend this meeting by 15 minutes first. You ready?
I'll prepare some.
Do you have a second? All those in favour extending for 15 minutes? Three, all those against?
I'm for.
Okay, thank you, Mr Forbes. The meeting is now... I can try and get some. I can run another two minutes. Okay, the last item there is a member responsible for press relations. I know we're trying to get someone to do it earlier on and councillor Low has a free to take this role. So can I have a proposal for councillor Low to be the press relations member? That's what I heard. Councillor Stubbs, all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. You're abstention.
I abstention.
Well, that's not it. Just we did it quite nicely. Thank you very much.